Hello. Thank my Mike and the baby too, huh?
Shere, come sit down.
Y'all want to do that today?
Y'all said security was important. I was talking to the chief.
If you'd proceed, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Next, we have an item on hotel funding for the local arts and application process. We have a couple of things we want to address here today, and Dean's going to come up and do a presentation. One is the application process. As I reviewed some of the budget meetings from last year, there were some questions about the funding of applicants and that process and repetitive funding of people with sometimes not much justification or proof for what they were doing. So Dean's going to get up and talk about that, and also some of our funding challenges with hot tax for this coming year. You saw that slide from Todd last meeting where there was some challenges there. So Dean, if you would come up, we'd appreciate it.
Mayor, council, Mr. Williams, thanks for having me. Congratulations, Roy, and thank you for everything you've done for the CVB being on our board. And I also want to offer some kudos to the Communications Department and also for the marketing team for the CVB for winning some awards recently in Press Club. So that's really, really good stuff, getting the message out to the citizens. This is just the first slide. If you can go to the second slide, I think there's been some... Yeah. Okay, these are the way hotel tax funds are supposed to be sent, be spent, this government tax code. You have a hard copy there, I'm sure you can look on your monitor, but every dollar must be spent directly to enhance tourism and the convention and hotel industry. And it goes on from there, different reasons. It could be spent for the convention center, information center, advertising promotion, a promotion of the arts, sporting events, and then goes, ends up with transportation systems. Those transportation systems are mostly to get tourists around along with your locals, but if it's not tourists involved, those transportation systems are not legal. I've been here about 21 years, and the system we have used to disperse these funds is pretty much archaic. It's always like, we've always done it this way, and I think we need to find a better way, a more proper way to do it. Here's some guidelines that we've been working, we've been working on this for about four or five months. We've spoken to plenty of different cities, and we think these are fair and equitable to everyone that applies. The event must take place in the city. Just because you ask, let's say if you ask for $200,000, which is completely unreasonable, there's no guarantee you'll get that. We're setting the max at $300,000. That's with your approval. Right now, it's about $280,000. Funding, the funding must not go towards operating cost. That's, that's kind of a key. It needs to enhance tourism, and the applicant must be in good financial standing with the city. On the bottom, on my bottom left, you can see that this is the group we would want to oversee the initial funding, and then if it's a group, if it's over $5,000, and they would make a two to three minute presentation to the council, and then we would come to the final formal agreement. The next page, this is the timeline. We think it'll probably take about, you know, four to six months for this, for everything to, to happen, because there's will be the application process, application will be reviewed, we'll go over that with the, the groups that want to borrow the money, then we come to the council, and then formal agreement. And this is the, this slide we just put in last night. It just kind of shows the financial situation the CVB is in. Personally, I feel we've had the best year ever this year, but we had, we've had some challenges with the Terrell Park Nature Center, with the cost of that being a million, $500,000. We wanted to furnish it with the state-of-the-art equipment, that would be another $700,000. Our hotel tax collections, right now, we've had a very good month in the month of April. They're always a month behind, but it looks like we'll be able to hit, hit our budget. But with the cost of the nature center being probably $600,000, $750,000, we really think that's going to put a damper in our plans. We've already started cutting some programs, so we're starting to save some money, but it's very important on your decision how we want to move forward or hold off a year on the furnishing of the nature center. So Todd, do you have anything you want to add?
Just, just what Dean said and what I recapped at the last meeting with council on the budget, that, you know, the way, the way we're trending right now, the hotel fund would be out of cash at the end of the year. So that's why we're highlighting this Terrell Park Nature Center. That budget of $774,000 includes about $575,000 of kiosks and, you know, interactive areas for, for learning. So if we can suspend that $575,000 or, or a good portion of it, because we do, obviously we need to maintain some cash reserves for this hotel fund.
If we don't build it out this year, would you put Rebecca back somewhere else? I mean, why, we wouldn't keep her over there if we're not doing anything over there, are we?
That still needs to be decided. She's, she's still entertaining different groups, putting on art, art events. It'd be nice to have her out there, because we do have a gift shop out there that's doing a little better than we thought it might. It'd be nice to have someone out of that building. She's been out there basically by herself. It's always just been one person out there. Whether if Rebecca's off, then we bring someone over from Cattail Marsh. So unless I'm told differently, I would like to keep her out there at least for the next, next three or four months, as long as we're, as long as we're running programming. We've also installed a new, new trail, 800-foot trail from the nature center to Cattail Marsh. That was just recently completed. If you go out to Cattail Marsh, you'll see the parking lot is, is full, probably four or five days out of the week. So Terrell Park is getting more traffic than ever before.
But we already have the building out there at Cattail Marsh, which has kind of a gift shop in it as well. Are we kind of duplicating things, or?
We, the gift shop at Cattail Marsh, we moved it to Terrell, the Terrell Park, so that it's more of an open area the way it should be. There's, there's yoga that takes place every, every Saturday, so we, you know, we're trying to cut expenses any way we can, and if, if that needs to take place, then we will, we will try to do something.
And I know I've been out there, and there are summer programs, kid programs happening, and as well as, I mean, we just, a lot of money was spent on that building. That's a nice building. If we didn't have anybody out there, it'd be locked up. So trying to continue to find ways to utilize that, I think are important.
I've got a question, Mayor.
Yes, councilman.
Does the Terrell Park Nature Center, this other $750,000, does that have to be funded with hot tax money?
I don't know why it would be. I mean, it was kind of, prior administration saw a pretty strong fund balance for us and said, "Well, we'd like a million and a half dollars so we can renovate this building." The funds could come from the general fund, whatever y'all decide on. I mean, it would not, it would be nice to move forward with our plan. The CVB is just not able to do it at this time.
Any other questions?
So, Mr. Manager, would it be appropriate now to, you know, have council talk about, as Councilmember Neal suggested, maybe finding alternative sources to move forward with this building? Because we've already invested lots of money in this building, and to just have it kind of sit there struggling to justify its existence is, is difficult.
Yeah, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dean, most of these dollars are for the improvement of the structure of the building, right?
The original million, million and a half was. I mean, the building is, there's nothing wrong with the building at all right now. We just wanted to put in some interactive activities for children, have 20 or 30 iPads so they can go through educational programming.
So the $774,000 is for expansion of existing services.
That is correct. The building, this, this next phase, if we move forward, is for the left-hand side of the building, the largest side of the building. Then after that, we thought we would work on the outside of the building, so the kids could be out in nature, in and out. And then the third side would be another probably $200,000. That's the right side of the building, where we would tell the history, basically the history of the building.
Well, I'm not sure we have that kind of money and other funds for this project right now. We'll hear more about that as the budget goes along. If it's an issue, I would recommend we just, you know, put it on hold, the expansion project, and you can continue to do operations out there, but not spend this money yet until we get a clear picture of what's going on.
Yeah. This, this is the 100-year anniversary of Terrell Park, and we're planning on having a fundraiser in the fall to invite some people out, some different corporations, and if, if we can raise, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars in which we're planning on doing, that could put us closer to the end goal.
Councilman Turner?
Dean, are we 100% committed to still moving forward with that plan, or is it a possibility we can look at Plan B and explore other options with that particular facility?
I think we look at any plan that makes sense, so.
I think that's good to put out there, you know, with it newly renovated, even somebody coming in and leasing it, it may go with the thing that we're actually doing out there that deals with children. So I think that could be something we can possibly look at exploring since we're in this financial position we're in right now.
The first thing we did was save the building, and I think that's important, because that is the centerpiece of Terrell Park, and Terrell Park is a true jewel. So I'm glad, what we've accomplished so far, I'm very happy with what the city's done.
Very good. Any other questions? Councilman Neal?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Manager, you said we didn't have the money in other budgets either, but based off of this slide, we don't have the money in this one.
Correct. That's, that's why I was saying, we might want to put this expansion on hold until we, we know better about funding for.
So, so can we put this on hold, but then add this 774 into the CIP?
It's according to what it's for, because these are hot tax dollars. So it has to satisfy those conditions that Dean had on the first or second screen. One, it's got to promote tourism and hotel industry, then, then satisfy one of those other eight things, I think it was, up there, including arts, et cetera, et cetera.
No, I'm saying not use hot tax money to fund this. Move it into the CIP and use other monies at a later date when it's allocated.
Again, we don't know if we have the money available in general fund or somewhere to fund this. Is that your question?
No, I'm not saying do it this year.
Okay, next year. Yeah, it's kind of like just putting it on hold and seeing where we can fund it from next year.
I just don't think it's fair to make the CVB fund all of this if they don't have the, the money to do it.
Then we can get a recommendation, the viability of the project, you know, is it, is it still viable to this council or Dean and his group and his board?
Okay.
Thank you. And I guess we could explore other options as well, as was discussed.
Okay. So is it, it's, the consensus of council, the, to put this project, this expansion on hold for now with these dollars? Good. All right, thank you. The attorney doesn't like my consensus words sometimes.
Maybe we proceed, city manager?
Yes, Mayor West. Over to you, TERS and PIDS Development Financing, too. We've gotten clear feedback from council on, on looking at and exploring options of financing and way to do some projects throughout the city. So today, we're gonna, some months ago, I gave you a TERS and PIDS 101. Today, you're gonna get the 202, PIDS 202 from Mr. Rick Menshawka. Rick's with UMB, a financial group, he's senior vice president and manager of the Texas region. He, Rick's also a prior city manager of San Marcos, Texas, and Midland, Texas. So he, he understands the city part of it, but also the financial side of it. So June has contacted him to bring him in to have a discussion, and he has a presentation for you.
Thank you. Mayor and council, thank you. It's a pleasure, it's a pleasure to be with you this morning. Just a, to continue the discussion, I know there's always a need for, for additional projects, and of course, you know, you have to get the financing for that. What we want to do today, just continue a little bit of that discussion, but maybe some other revenue opportunities that the city may consider as they're looking at, can you continue development and expansion of their, of their community. So you talked about TERS, Tax Increment Reinvestment Zones, also sometimes called TIFs. So those, those terms are used anonymously. And then PIDS, Public Improvement Districts. So just a very high-level definition, just to go over it again for everyone's benefit, is a tax in a TERS is where basically where the property tax revenues above a baseline are dedicated to the TERS. So there's no additional tax. So you have a million dollars in valuation as a baseline, anything above that, for whatever period of time the city council decides, then that revenue, then additional revenue gets dedicated back into that, that zone, that particular project. Here's an example of just, again, what that, that timeline is. It could be, the council sets the timing on that, it could be forever, it could be for 20 years. If you're going to issue debt, then you want to make sure it's marrying, you know, the debt to, to help support that. But that's basically a real high-level definition of what the TERS is. The PID, we'll talk about that a little bit also, that's the Public Improvement Districts. That's an additional assessment. PIDS are, are, in, in the Houston area, we see a lot of MUDs, Municipal Utility Districts. Those are other governmental entities that have additional responsibilities for services to, to that particular district. PIDS are different. PIDS are the thing that's been happening, oh, more, more on in the last five, six years. We see a lot more in the central Texas and the north Texas area, especially with new developments. From, I actually, as a city manager, in Midland issued PIDS 20 years ago, but I'll tell you that the, the state has streamlined some of that process, at least the creating of PID, if that's something the city wants to go at. Again, the PID is more of an assessment. Let's say it comes down to you have a project, and that project is a million dollars, and then you, you assess that over a period of time over the property, usually it's over the valuations, and so a, a property may have a thousand-dollar annual assessment. And so that's how, it's, 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 it's to be paid usually through some kind of ratio, like a tax is what it comes up to, but it's an additional fee above. So there's, on this case, there's no funds from the city coming into that PID. So let's talk again about TERS, and, and I may overlap what you've already been, been shared with by, by June and Kenneth, but again, the TERS is created by the city or county, and the other taxing entities can participate, the city, the county, if you can get the school district to participate, if you have a community college and a hospital district, any of those other entities can also participate. The costs of the public improvements are to be repaid by from the future. Again, the city's giving up some of that future gain towards this, this area, and I'm going to go over what, what some of those opportunities can be, based on increase. So what you're doing is like you're, a lot of times, you're going to see a TERS in downtown. Actually, Houston has multiple TERS in the downtown area. And so there, it's mainly used, I would say, it's a redevelopment tool, because when you're looking at it overall, you know, you're looking at what I call redevelopment and economic development tools, and that's what the state has allowed the cities to do. There's, there's a bunch of criteria. Basically, it's a blighted or substantially impaired. It doesn't necessarily have to be blighted, but it, it's, we see TERS in new, in new developments also. There was one in Brownsville here just recently created for a new residential area. Once the TERS is created, if you decide you want to do some bonds, then you can do that through COs. So of course, what can we use the TERS for? And here's the laundry list. Purchase of land for public infrastructure, relocation of public utilities, water, wastewater, drainage improvements, parks and landscaping, public roads and buildings, facade improvements, or listened earlier to how maybe we need to have a, look at a downtown facade program, and you can do that also. A lot of times, those facade improvements, while you may get it as a grant, but usually it's a grant with strings, right? To make sure that they're going to be in that for that particular use and maintain for whatever period of time, whatever policies you set. Environmental remediation, a lot of times, to some of these buildings, and I'm not familiar with all your buildings here, I know in San Marcos, I had a cleaners, and you know, the, all the chemicals that were involved in prior with the cleaning of, of clothing are hazardous now. And so there's a little bit of money from the state, sometimes you can get some Fed money, but basically, the overall cost to redevelop that property was pretty high, that most developers wouldn't come in unless they had some assistance. Well, that's where this TERS money might come in. It can help reduce some of that, that cost barrier, I would call it, so that you can redevelop that property. So instead of having a vacant building, maybe you can get that to then be a tax-producing property. Now, it would be tax-producing to the TERS for a while, until then that, that value, you know, is turned over, but in the meantime, hopefully, it's providing services, other improvement in quality of life, but on top of that, it's also employment opportunities that could come from some of these projects. So that's, again, you're, what you're trying to do is some of these funds is reduce the, the cost barriers to redevelopment, especially like in your downtown. Demolition of existing structures, you know, that was heavily discussed this morning. Of course, the lien program is important, but again, at the end of the day, if you've got so much, and I think the attorney alluded to this, when you have so much in liens, is that also going to be a barrier to redeveloping? So that's, that's something you'll have to possibly negotiate when you get to that point. And that's a tool. We said, "Look, if you do come in, you do certain things, maybe we can weigh some of these liens that we've placed on here." Again, you're reinvesting on this. I will, I will tell you this, this is a longer-term program. This is not a seven-year turnaround. This is more like at least a 10 to 20 type of year. Most times, cities are going to see probably about year 12 to 15. Most, I'm in San Antonio now, most of you are familiar with the Pearl Project, right? The Pearl Redevelopment Project. That project took about 15 years before it really got going. And it's at the old brewery, the Emma Hotel, all the eating facilities and other entertainment venues that are now, it took really to what it is today, it took about 15 years. So some of these projects can take a while. Now, the Emma's, you know, one of the top hotels in the country, and of course, the other eateries that are there. So just to understand, you have to, you have to be there a little longer, but the thing, at least with the city, is you have the staying power, you know, you're, you're in for the long haul. If you decide to issue debt, you know, it's, it's an opportunity to, to issue to support the debt, so it's not coming from your GO. I know, you know, you have challenges already in your, your GO or CO, general fund-supported CIP program. And then, of course, any administration fees and marketing, similar to your hot funds, any of the fees and costs related to maintaining, managing, operating the TERS all come from that fund, and then operational costs also related to that. City of New Braunfels, this is their downtown TERS, you know, that they've got a vibrant downtown that they're continuing to, to improve, and this is just an idea of what they're using the funds for. You know, a lot of things that are very common, sidewalks, environmental remediation, land assembly for parking, all things to help bring people, help bring tourism dollars, help create, create value in the buildings you have already, if they're salvageable. That's one of the things, you have an asset there, can, can, are these, some of these structures salvageable? This is a potential tool to do that. Now, let's talk about Public Improvement Districts, and they're not as common in, in this, this part of the, of the state. And it is nothing against it, other than just they were using MUDs prior to. I'll tell you from, from a former city manager and from, from what we see from a governance side, from a city council, when you're looking at PIDS and MUDs, you would prefer a PID in the sense of your control over a PID versus a MUD is usually developed by a developer, he sets up the board, he controls the board until there's enough ownership, and then they continue, they never go away. Whereas a PID, they're project-specific, usually dollar-specific, and once that's done or paid for, they go away. You know, it's all under the control of the city council, and governance control is, is, I would think, an important consideration. But again, a PID's another financing mechanism, but this is an additional assessment, this is an additional amount, additional tax, however you want to call it, on that particular area. There's a whole process that your bond attorneys will go through on how to create this, but again, it's a tool that's been used. We see a lot of it in residential areas, but it's also starting to be used in more industrial and commercial areas. Right now, we're, we're working on a project in the, along the border, which a very large logistics project. And so you're seeing some of that, and what they're going to do is basically the water, the sewer, the drainage, the street infrastructure to get to the logistics center. And so it's, it can also be used for commercial applications. There are two types of PIDS. There's an operation and maintenance PID, that's one, like the, that was not as common, and so basically, that's just to maintain and operate the infrastructure. We'll go over that here in a second. And there's a capital PID. A capital PID is, like I said, that's when you're issuing debt for specific infrastructure, infrastructure improvements. The governance, how do you create it? City council creates it. One of the things, of course, that's unique with the PIDS is, it's important, at least to the finance folks, is we call these bonds nonrecourse. Basically, they're not the, the obligation of the city. And so these, the PIDS are what we call revenue project bonds, so they're staying solely on the merits of the revenue to support it. So from that end, there's not, there's not a moral obligation, there's not a financial obligation from the city. The administrative burden, anything of that nature, all is, you usually hire a third-party administrator. Usually, your, your appraisal district, central appraisal district collects, if you're doing it correctly, they'll collect the revenue for you. And, and again, let me see, I went back there. And it is, again, fixed term on assessments. That's the, the key difference with, between that and MUDs. What can we use a PID for? Very similar to the TERS, as you see there. Cities use it for libraries, because a lot of times, developers are going to come in and say, "Well, we're going to give you the land, we're going to give you park land," and it's the bottom of the channel, right, that floods for soccer fields. And that's great, but what other things can you get? If you do get a PID, one of the things I always say is, what more are you getting from the developer than you would not be getting just, just from company? Because basically, there's a shift in some of that financial liability from the developer over to the, to the property owners, and so that's a negotiating point for y'all to decide, what else would I be getting? I've got some clients that they'll ask, that the developer, they put some money in towards the new fire station, because there's more, there's more rooftops out there. There's some that will say, "We need, we need either police substation, or we need a city hall." And so the city hall won't necessarily be in the PID, but they can contribute towards that. So those are all policies, decisions each city council gets to make. But again, here, it's, again, a laundry list. You even got, have an opportunity to do what we call affordable housing or attainable housing. So those are, you are, you know, that's, those are some of the opportunities that, as, as you look at it. Again, what does the city get? Enhanced amenities, that's the goal, not just what's coming in, what everybody else is getting, what, what more am I getting that, because I'm taking on or shifting some of that financial liability? Do you want more hiking bike trails? If it's an area, your growth has been pretty stagnant. You know, I've looked at your growth over the last 10 years, we, when we met here about a month or so ago, we're looking over 10-year growth. But as you have areas that are growing, Texas is still the fastest-growing, one of the fastest-growing states, of course, in the country, but as you have growth and you have areas along your ETJ that are looking to come in, it is a great tool, and this is what we see, a lot of cities using them, it's a great tool to have an annexation agreement. You know, all the, there's a lot of restrictions with annexation now and how you can annex. So this will be an, an opportunity to bring those properties in, and if you did put them in a PID, you're going to get potentially some of that tax revenue, and then the PID is, so again, if they have any debt or operation costs, that's going to be on the property owners in the future. There's been a lot of changes from the state regarding cities regulating building materials. If the city decides to, you can set some of those standards. And so again, it's all the things that you work into your, into your PID and development agreements. Affordable and attainable housing might be another, another option. And of course, I'm not your attorney. You'll always consult with your financial advisor and, and, and your bond counsel on that. But that was, just wanted to give you a quick overview of some additional tools to look at. Again, one is sharing the revenue. Again, one is sharing the revenue and the other one is not. I didn't go over it earlier, but we are seeing occasionally where we overlap TERS and PIDs. And so remember, the TERS is going to give some of that revenue, it's going to share some of that revenue. And what they do is, instead of sharing that revenue, what they're doing is using some of that shared revenue to pay down some of that PID assessment. So if your PID assessment was going to be $10, maybe through the TERS, shared revenue, maybe it's only $5. And so it's, it's, it's something we're seeing also more, more frequently. We're seeing that more frequently in the residential side, but it doesn't mean it can't be used for other redevelopment areas. That's it, Mayor, thank you.
All right. Any questions? Councilman Gatz.
So this was a pretty high-level overview of TERS and PIDs. Ken, Kenneth, could you break it down a little bit in a specific, for instance, of how it might be able to be utilized here in Beaumont with some specific examples?
Well, the screen up here is like downtown New Braunfels. You can draw your boundaries around the entire downtown area and say, this is a TERS. Okay, so whatever the tax liability is for somebody, it would be at that level, and that's what the city would collect. As the property values increase, those dollars would go toward the TERS or even less of a liability toward the property owner. So it gives them an incentive to improve their property with less of a tax burden. I mean, less tax, more tax dollars that could go to improve their properties and their, and their projects. As a residential neighborhood, if you have a developer coming into a residential neighborhood, he can create a PID. Where PID is basically, again, as Rick said, you have the ability to establish that PID and set up guidelines, much of the guidelines of it. You also can demand what amenities go in. A typical PID goes above and beyond normal city amenities, you know, like where we might put a park in the neighborhood. But they might put walking trails, more parks, fire stations, all of that in there. It's, it's more than the norm because they're able to, many times, establish their own tax rate. They can tax on PID, MUD, to make sure I got them right. Some, some of the PIDs and MUDs can tax on top of what the city does. And so they get their things.
So there's a big tract of land in the west end of Beaumont that has become a managed municipal district, which is the first one in the city of Beaumont we've ever had. Is that similar to the PIDs where they can go above and beyond? You know that if you decide to build in that managed municipal district, you're going to pay a little bit more than, than anybody else, which is going to go to help some of the infrastructure in that. Is that similar or is that something completely different?
Yeah, I think, yeah, I'm pretty sure that MMDs are the same as like the MUDs. If it's in the city, you still pay the city tax rate, but they have the ability to incorporate their own tax rate. And that's capped by the state of Texas at maximum. It was pretty high. I think some legislation has brought it down. But then they could take that money to pay for street improvements, water line installations, sewer line input, or whatever they might be, parks.
The, the whole deal for a TERS to work, though, like if you did the downtown area of Beaumont, you're kind of banking on the property values going up and the owners doing something to increase their property value for this to work, are you not?
Well, you are.
It, the whole, the whole theory is that, that the property values, and so part of that is for the city to incentivize, whatever that was, activities are, whether it's going to be entertainment, whether it's going to be another hotel downtown, whether it's going to be downtown living, mixed use, all that, yes. And so it has, it has to have some incentive. And so you're, the whole premise is, yes, all property values are going to go up in time. Again, talked, we talked about the Pearl. It took about 15 years before it really hit its stride. And so it's, and then at the end, the developer's going to be making more money. They don't have just a tax liability, just paying taxes and not getting any revenue off of it. They don't get their red cards or, you know, the issues of security costs involved in that. So hopefully, it's, it's an asset that's producing revenue for them at the end of the day. That's, that's the theory. So there are sometimes, sometimes cities work it for 15 years and it, it has a limited amount of success that decided, you know, we, we, we're fine where we are, we probably need to look at something else. But at least you tried it, it had some incremental increase rather than a decrease, but it's, it's, it's an opportunity to change. The whole premise is you have, if you have some, especially some buildings downtown or even some, some greenfields or brownfields, how can we make those into more, I say asset, but basically trying to raise the value of those so that whether if it's, if it's an office, then it's occupancy. If it's retail, again, it's occupancy and the sales per square foot, you know, all those things that add dollar value so that you can start getting more tax revenue. Because right now, you get a little bit just from that building, but the building gets its, it's, a commercial building, as y'all know, get its revenue from, from its rental and its occupancy levels. And so if it's not that, it's, right now, it's becoming a bit of a code enforcement, fire hazard and, and a police issue.
Councilman Turner?
These economic development tools, do they affect the general fund?
The TERS, doesn't affect it directly. What it does is any growth beyond the baseline, you decide what amount of that you want to share. If you want to share 100% from year one, or do you want to share a certain percentage from, of that, from that point? From, so the general fund keeps what it has now, right? The PID does not. The PID is, is, is a totally separate assessment on, on the homeowners or, or property owners.
Okay, I think that's good to know, for people to understand. Another thing is, it would eventually down the line, once it starts to create revenue, it can kind of reduce us from going in our general fund to take care of parks, some street improvements and some of the other improvements you heard us talk about today. Are we seeing some of the things that they actually go to, correct?
Exactly. So if you have street improvements, water improvements, street improvements, and that TERS, instead of being paid from those particular funds, especially your, your general fund, those can be paid from the, through the TERS.
So that's, it would be an asset then. Will any of these programs have to go to the voters?
No. No. The only time you actually go to voters is when you're going to issue general obligation bonds.
And are you familiar or ever heard of a continuous TERS?
Continuous TERS, no. I, you had mentioned that to me the other day, and I've checked with some of our attorneys, and so we, we just needed more background. But the TERS can be set for an infinite period of time, or can be set for a definite period of time, or can be set for a period that then be reviewed again. The only, the only caution would be to make sure if you're issuing debt from the bondholder side, that, you know, that that TERS at least meet that minimum period. But, and we can, we can look further into that. I did check with some of the attorneys we work with on, on TERS, and we weren't familiar with, with that term exactly. So if we get more background, maybe we can come up with a better answer for you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, counsel? Todd?
Just have a quick question.
Oh.
So Rick, is that why we would prefer to, you know, this criteria for designation, the geographic area declared blighted? So in other words, you wouldn't want to do this in an area where the property values are already experiencing increased values each year? Because then it would be taking revenue from the general fund. You want to do it in an area where the property values are not growing?
Well, exactly. You're trying to use as a tool to, for areas that are stagnant, declining, or maybe not even growing, if they're going at half of a percent and everywhere else is growing at 5%. You know, so where, where can we be in impetus for further development and growth? There's a lot more language that the attorneys will put in there for, for the bond issue inside or, or just from the creation of it to give you the latitude. At the end of the day, it's your, it's a, it's your, what are your economic development goals, as Mr. Williams is trying to get to, and then, then the tools you want to use to get there.
And one more. And lastly, we do have the authority, what if this council agreed to a 20-year TERS and we decided in 10 years to end it? We do have the authority to end it on our terms, correct?
Yes, as long as you don't have any debt tied to that or you're going to pay that debt off. Whether, however you decide, that's the only, that's the only caveat is, is if you've got debt that you issue for that long. The lot, sometimes these TERS, they're actually on a cash, you know, basis. We did a TERS financing last year for the city of Temple. They have Meta, a database center, $800 million database center coming in. So we did a TERS, they did a, I think a 380 also, Chapter 380 agreement, because they have, they're going to give them some of the electric revenue back towards that. But, so again, that was a, that was a greenfield area. And now those data centers don't have high employment, as you know, but they have tremendous value. And so, and they don't have that many calls for police or fire, or do they want parks, things of that age. So they don't need the high service, but they do bring a lot of value. So, but you can end it at any time as long as you're not tied it to some other financial obligation.
And lastly, I was researching, what I've been seeing happening lately is these power lines being buried, actually with some of these TERS and different type of funding. So these big wooden posts are not in these new districts, they're actually buried underground.
Again, that's, you can use those funds as part of the infrastructure. You know, we talked about water, wastewater, the most, most obvious, but yeah, that's, depends. Two cities, three, two cities that I worked for, we had electric companies, so we had a little more discretion. When you don't, you have to work with your local electric company. It is, the, the good thing here is about the soil. And so where I am, I have rock an inch below the top, but here, it's cheaper to trench. And so at least it, the cost is, is less. But I know when I was in San Marcos, city manager there, I was trying to bury the lines. It's very expensive. And, and at least if you had that option here, using, you know, these funds, if it's part of your aesthetic program, right? It's just burying the lines and, and other, other view shed type of obstacles out there.
Councilman Neal?
Mr. Williams, what is your thought on using a TERS like this for downtown?
Councilman Neal, I, I think it's a possible tool to use, especially because of the, the premise of it, that it's based upon improved values. And right now, the values are depressed down there. So anything we can do to help or provide incentive to property owners, but also benefit the city and getting infrastructure, new infrastructure in that area, I think it has possibilities.
Any other questions? I know that we've had recent property value increases of pretty significance in downtown, so that could also be a challenge that we would have to be looking with.
And that's a good point, man, because when that, when that increases, you know, that, that value, they can get a tax break on that increased value above that baseline, that slide with the baseline, anything above that baseline, if we give them, whether, whether it's 50%, 60%, 70% tax break to those property owners, we could do that above that baseline value at the time we create the TERS. So the property owners actually get a, get a break based upon whatever percentage you want to give them.
But this, and this is probably a legal question, but if property taxes aren't being paid because they're disputed and you entered into it, it wouldn't necessarily be, how would we benefit from that? If the current property tax isn't being paid? In the area that we're wanting to do the TERS in?
Well, we definitely want to pay the property taxes and probably you would have something inside the agreement that they do that and what those consequences are. But if they're not being paid, it makes it more difficult to, to pay that assessment by whoever, you know, but the property one that's paying their taxes, they still get their incentives.
So their remedy would be the same as any other property, person who didn't pay taxes does, it's not different because you're in a TERS, right? So, you know, be the same if they were outside of that district. Like our remedies wouldn't change just because they're in that district.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, Mayor, from me, we'll move on to number six, other revenue options. We've, staff has worked on other possibilities and other things to look at for council to consider in implementing. Some of them are beneficial to us and our citizens, you know, with low implication if they happen, and some of it's voluntary, if a person wants to participate. But you also hear about a street assessment, which is more encompassing. So, since the city manager, administration, June Ellis is going to talk about those.
Thank you, Mr. Williams, and thank you, council and mayor. This item was brought up by council member Turner at the last budget work session, kind of charging staff to look for additional ways to generate revenue here at the city of Beaumont. There are, and that is something that every city should strive to do. Every city should strive to diversify their revenue base. Every city shouldn't solely focus on the general fund dollars or water and sewer or sanitation. Each year, a city should look for new ways to, to bring in revenue to the city. And today, I'll present three, three of those ways that city of Beaumont can, can benefit from additional revenue. So I'll start with the parkland dedication fee. This is a fee that the city currently does not have in place. It's a fee that is charged to a builder for new residential or commercial projects to pay for public parkland. This was, this is legal. It was confirmed by the Texas Supreme Court in 1984, when there were some challenges against cities implementing this fee. So after 1984, throughout the state of Texas, there were, there was a large increase in cities implementing the parkland dedication fee. So cities have their statutory ability to impose a requirement of parkland dedication on developers for new parkland. And the way it happens is that a developer will deed specific acreage within their development for parkland. For those smaller developments, a developer can pay a fee instead of developing future land for a park within a new development. And in a city ordinance, city staff could require a developer to pay an in lieu fee as opposed to paying or dedicating land for a future park. That way, if a city receives those dollars or those in lieu of dollars, city staff could develop that park when it chooses to develop it. The fee would be, if there is a fee, paid to the city, the in lieu fee that would be equal to the fair market value of the, of the land. And the fee could be spent off-site to develop new parks and to renovate existing parks. So if the city of Beaumont put this in place, we would have to create specific zones around the city of Beaumont or geographical districts. And as those fees are collected, those fees would be restricted just for those zones to be used for future park development or for future amenities within that specific zone. So a city, so Beaumont, so we couldn't use funds from Zone A to build a park in Zone B. Those funds would, would need to stay and be spent within that particular zone. So this is a slide showing an example of a parkland dedication fee. So there would be a, a fee based on acreage, two acres of land for each 100 dwelling units. If the city requested or required cash in lieu of, that fee would be a set fee at, for example, $400 per dwelling unit for residential or 600 per acre for a commercial. And also, cities are implementing, and it's allowable under, under state law, a park development fee. So if we are dedicated land for a future park in a new development in Beaumont, we, we don't want to use city funds per se to, to build the, the future parks. So we would require the developer to pay a, a park development fee for the future development of the park or of amenities in, in existing park. So there is a formula for determining the amount of parkland required to be dedicated. It's based on the number of dwelling units created multiplied by the number of residents per unit. And some cities have a minimum size for parkland dedication. That can range from one-half of an acre up to 10 acres. A lot of cities currently average about five acres for A lot of cities currently average about five acres for parkland development for, for new development. So to answer the question of why Beaumont should consider a parkland dedication fee, the local government's authority to require dedication for parks is derived from, from a city's mandate to regulate the health, safety and general welfare of the citizens of a city. This improves the quality of life. So this mandate is, is allowed by state law or under state law. It's called a city's police power, which gives us the authority to implement a parkland dedication fee. Park facilities in areas that are newly developed shifts the burden off of the existing residents and taxpayers to bear the cost. So by having this fee in place, if there's a new development on the west side of town, it, it doesn't require the residents on the south side of town to pay for that development of a new park. Additionally, it also enables elected officials to protect the interests of the current residents and to manage growth. Again, there, this wouldn't allow current residents to have to pay for the development of a park or park amenities or park improvements, because the city will have received those dollars from the developer or will have been deeded the land for a future park. Parkland dedication is a one-time major investment in capital infrastructure that reflects a long-term view of amenities the city should have in the future. So it, it ensures a, a city, that a city has adequate park improvements now and into the future. So how do we establish such a parkland dedication fee? These fees are established through city ordinance. That would be brought before council and approved by city council. The city would establish a new parkland fund to record these fees that are collected in these different zones throughout the city. So these funds would be restricted in a separate fund. They wouldn't be commingled with any other funds, such as the general fund or the water and sewer fund. Expenditures of the fund would be restricted to the development of new parks or the repair existing parks and other park amenities within each specific zone within the city. So this is a list of just some cities in Texas that currently have a parkland dedication fee in place. As you can see, there are small cities on this list as well as large cities. The city of Alvin, population currently is about 28,000 in, in population. Buta is on the list. Buta has a parkland dedication fee in place. And as you can see, Houston has a fee in places as well as, as well as many other cities throughout the, the state of Texas. And this is just a short list. There are dozens of other cities that currently have this fee in place. Corpus Christi, for example, they put their parkland dedication fee in place in 1955. Deer Park, 1959, they've had it since, since then. And again, there were some lawsuits and in 1984, Texas Supreme Court ruled that, that these fees are valid for a municipality. So the next steps related to creation of a parkland dedication fee, if this is something that the council chooses to, to do here at Beaumont, we would, we would allow this fee to be created through our Parks and Trail Master Plan. In the proposed budget that we'll be bringing to council in the next few months, we do propose to include funding for Parks and Trails Master Plan. That will, and I heard that comment today about new parks and improvement of parks throughout the city. So this Parks and Trails Master Plan would provide a, a planning policy and guidance for current as well as future development of parks within, within the city limits of Beaumont. And so we would also charge the consultant with determining what the parkland dedication fee would be for Beaumont, the in lieu fee. If we do not have the actual land deeded to us and we charge an in lieu fee, as well as what the parkland development fee would, would be as well. And that would be brought before city council for, for your approval. The park, the Parks and Trail Master Plan, we would take that to the Parks Advisory Board and get their recommendation on that plan and bring it to city council for your approval and adoption of the master plan. Then we would come back and create an ordinance and seek city council's approval of the ordinance to implement the parkland dedication fee. And if we do get the approval of the Parks and Trails Master Plan in place, which would start at the beginning of the new fiscal year, October 1, we would immediately begin the creation of the Parks and Trails Master Plan, which would also include the development of the various fees for the park dedication fee if council chooses to implement that going forward. So by the end of next, before the end of next fiscal year, we could have all of this in place for the city. I'm open to any questions or comments.
Councilman Neal.
Thank you, Mayor. So I guess at the end of the day, this is just a tax on the developer. We're already having a hard time incentivizing people to come into Beaumont to develop. Wouldn't this go, wouldn't even make it harder now?
Not necessarily make it harder. What a developer would probably do is, is, you know, pay less for the land or have fewer amenities within the, the, the new homes. So they wouldn't necessarily, and as you know, in some cases, they may try to shift that cost to the homeowner. So it, it wouldn't necessarily prevent a developer from coming into, into Beaumont. Again, every city has, has these, or most cities across Texas, many cities have a parkland development fee. And, you know, if you look around, you know, Pearland, Sugar Land, you know, those places around these big cities such as Houston and Dallas, you know, developers are lined up to, to come into those communities and, and they have these fees in place.
Councilman Getz.
So let's take it a step further and drill down to a real life example. We have Northwest Parkway, which is a $12 million road that we put in. And it's got a lot of land that's undeveloped on both sides of it, all the way from Major Drive up all the way to Old Dallin Road. How would something like this affect a developer that wanted to build out there or start selling lots to build out there?
How would it affect them? Well, this, this would be part of their cost when they come to pay for the plat of, of those lands, they would have to pay this parkland development fee. But again, this is not something, it's, it would be new for Beaumont, but I, I'm pretty sure new developers are very aware of this fee. And, and when they come to Beaumont and they say, oh, they don't have a parkland development fee, they, they don't let us know that because that's money they don't have to pay. But I, I'm certain it, it's not something that would scare away a developer.
Okay, so what, you, you talked early on about drawing lines around, yeah, yeah. So if you did that, potentially you would say, okay, this land is all out here and you're going to build a park out here or how, how's that going to work?
Yeah, so throughout the city, there would be various zones or geographical districts. Again, we wouldn't want to collect these parkland fees in one part of town and use them all the way, use them in a, in a different part of town. Actually, the, the law doesn't require us to do that. So those fees would be captured and recorded in the city's financial system within the park, parkland development fund for that particular zone. Each year, the parks director, city staff would know how much money is available within that particular zone. When we come through the budget process and city manager and city staff are looking for ways to fund projects, park-related projects, we would look within each one of those zones to see what the, the balance is within, within those zones and, and use those dollars within the zones to pay for park development, new amenities, park improvements.
Only comment I have is I think it's a great idea. And when you mentioned Pearland and Sugar Land, those are areas that are experiencing explosive growth. And I don't know how that would translate if we look back at three years and the, and the last three years of Beaumont, where that would generate us necessarily any revenue because we hadn't been having these new developments. And certainly I wouldn't be excited about doing, I'm open to this, but I wouldn't be excited about doing something that adds to development costs to developments that are not occurring already. So that would be my concern.
Yes, sir. And, and one thing to add on to that, you know, you know, if there aren't development occurring currently, we would at least have this in place whenever that does occur. State of Texas is fastest growing state in, in the country. And, you know, we want to reap the benefit of those new residents. So we, we will have this in place, we could have this in place when those major development projects start.
Councilman Turner, do you have a quick comment?
Chris, this previous year, how many commercial permits did we have approved in the city of Beaumont?
I don't have those numbers in front of me.
But is it, is it safe to say I remember the city put out something that was the most commercial or the most permits and?
Seems like it was 7,000 approximately.
And what, what have we been doing average?
It was the most we'd had in 10 years. Okay, year, year over year. So, you know, as I look at this, and I, and I think, and June can correct me if I'm wrong, but you may be able to tweak it where maybe you don't go after single family homes so much, but maybe commercial or multifamily. So as I look at this, you know, I see all those apartment complexes that have gone up out there. And most of that is outside development money coming in. And so it would have been nice to capture that because of all those residents, there's not, you know, there's, there are a couple of parks out there, but it would be nice to capture some of that, especially for those multifamily projects.
So with the permits being there and our general fund, on average, we was doing roughly 130,000, we were pulling out our general fund to put towards park improvements, which we recently increased to 1.46 million, correct?
Right, so this would be, and then again, the way it's described is you can either do a park or you do an lieu of fee. In my experience, looking at other cities, they don't want to mess with building a park. They just want to do the in lieu of fee. So that, that could all go towards, you know, a park, basically a park fund.
And, and some of these fees wasn't really significant to stop a developer from coming to Beaumont. When I looked at it and what they do in Houston, they pass the fee off to the person that's actually building the home, it's not on the developer. And I just really think we need to be careful when we say things like, people not coming in as I grown, we had the most permits in almost the history, recently just happened here, it is happening.
Yeah, I think you have to be cognizant of, you know, we're, in terms of growth, we're not Sugar Land, we're not some of these other cities that have experienced that growth. So you do have to keep that in mind in terms of, if you tell a developer you're going to have to spend X number of dollars additionally to develop in Beaumont when they could go right across, you know, Keith Road or whatever and not have that, you need to be cognizant of that. But again, you know, quality of life is important.
Yeah, I just, we, we're spending it regardless if it being a general fund, if it come from outside, we actually increased the park funding. So if you look at the revenue that we increased, it's real logical to at least consider a version of it to tweak it, you know, based on what's kind of going on around. I mean, you had a city, what's Buta's population?
19,000.
19,000. Imagine if they council thought to the magnitude of what it affected developers, that's not even a fraction of our population. So I just want to challenge us to kind of think a little bit bigger when it comes to the city of Beaumont. That's all I ask from the council.
Councilman.
Just a quick question. Would this be something we would have charged to the new municipal management district that opened here recently in Beaumont that they would have, if we had this in place?
You could have, yes.
Okay.
And is it within the city limits?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we would have been able to capture additional revenue.
And to that point, you still could. So if we went forward with this, we, as Mr. Ellis alluded to, we'll, we'll capture it usually at the time of either plating or development. So maybe part of the building permit, maybe part of the planting, plating permit. So it's still a possibility even in that development.
Okay.
And that, that particular mud, Chris, those citizens are already going to pay additional tax, but they knowingly paying it because they want those type of amenities in their community. That's why you see them real big in Austin and some of those areas, people will pay more for what they want, but I think it's their choice to do it and they're choosing to move in those areas.
Councilman Getz.
I'm not sure I understand what the utility would be of putting this type of a fee on a managed municipal district when the whole point of the managed municipal district would be to raise that additional revenue to build the parks by the developer. That's, I mean, the developer's already going to be building parks, parks in that area. So why would we have this on top of that?
Well, there are some cases in, in our ordinance, we can put in the ordinance credits to the developer. You know, if they're already building a park, then they would get a credit and wouldn't have to pay the fee.
I like that.
And to that point, if I could, Mayor, real quick, that, that development has, we've seen schematics of, of what they think it's going to be, but it hasn't been platted yet. And so even though they may show park and park improvements, which I expect they will do, there's no guarantee that they would do it.
Councilman Neal.
Thank you, Mayor. So June, is this, is this for residential neighborhoods or are we talking about putting this fee on any development?
Well, it can be used for residential or commercial. It's used more for residential.
Okay, that was my thought originally, that it was for residential. But back to Councilman Turner's original point, talking about how many permits we've had, do you know how many permits we've had for new homes the last year?
I don't have that in front of me, but on average, we do a couple, 200 to 300 a year. I, I can say in the last couple of years, we have had a lot of residential units finalized. So in other words, I think we calculated over 500 new lots that have been platted, haven't been built yet, but have been platted, which gives us an indication that, you know, there is a demand.
Yeah, thank you.
Councilman Felsell.
June, just once again, the council could determine that this is for commercial and multifamily dwellings, but not single family dwellings. We could make that very specific, couldn't we?
Yeah, in the, I guess you could make it more specific, but again, it's mainly used for residential, for those cities that are growing, building a lot of subdivisions. If you were to exclude residential, we probably wouldn't collect, obviously, we wouldn't collect as much revenue into this particular fund, but it, it could happen the way you laid it out.
But you'd be cutting out the major, the, you'd be cutting out the, yeah.
You would.
The biggest portion of that.
That's correct.
And perhaps what would help us for future in terms of how viable this is, if we could get some projections on what that would have meant in the last couple of years in terms of revenue. But I mean, it, that would be helpful.
Yeah, be clear, it does, there is a cost associated to a developer, you know. But with that being said, a developer is coming in, especially with apartments, and they're bringing in hundreds or thousands of people that's going to use your existing infrastructure, your existing parks. And they're adding numbers to the park, but they're not sharing the cost. So it's really beneficial when the apartments come in that they're able to expand your existing park system for those people to have somewhere to go to, to, for that, or either they can donate the land. Of course, they donate the land, meaning that's one less house or two you can build and sell.
Right.
So that's a cost too. But it's definitely that. And June mentioned zones, I, I, I'm not sure, June, that you have to have those zones. I think sometimes city can have a choice, just make it citywide and you can use the money all, all over the city. So we might need to verify that one.
Yeah, larger cities, when I was at Pearland and Missouri City, we had zones. Normally larger cities have zones because you, you want to make sure that, that those dollars are used within an area where. dollars are used within an area where a resident would have a short distance to travel to the park, as opposed to coming all the way across town, which most residents probably wouldn't do.
We didn't have zones in Buda, while the population wasn't speeding, we had a lot of large landmass. So we wasn't restricted to zones, the money could be used any park around town, so. That's all I have to say.
All right. Well, any other questions? Let's proceed with Adam Seb.
All right.
Oh, sorry.
Next one. Yeah, there are a couple more. There's another one after this one here that I'll cover as well. But again, going back to looking at ways a city can bring in additional revenue to the, to the city, to offset some of our expenses. One of the ways is through a street maintenance fee. This is a fee cities across Texas currently implement. It's a fee collected from, it would be a fee collected from city of Beaumont residents and businesses. It's assessed on residents and businesses based on traffic generated by each dwelling unit or business, and is intended to help better maintain our road system. The revenue generated would be used to pay for materials, supplies, equipment, and labor to repair our city streets. The funding would be designated to improve conditions through the reconstruction, rehabilitation, systematic plan, street maintenance, and policy changes. These dollars would not be designed or designated for the construction of new streets, just maintaining what we currently have. And these dollars would be used for street maintenance within the city of Beaumont. The question of why should we consider implementing such a street maintenance fee? Again, I've mentioned diversification of revenues, which is something we should always consider, and also demand, which is needs, our demands far exceed supply, which is revenue. In order to fix all of the city of Beaumont's streets with over a five-year period, it would cost the city $318 million in order to do that within five years. That's roughly $62.4 million a year, if we went that route. City doesn't have those dollars in its coffers, it's, that's basically unrealistic unless we shifted a lot of money from other services within the city. The Public Works Department have brought in over the years, a consultant that conducted a pavement condition study. And our steady state pavement condition index, or PCI, currently would require the city to spend $6.58 million just to hold steady at our current PCI rate, rating of 67. So if we didn't do any, anything more, and wanted to keep the status quo with regard to streets, we could spend six point, almost $6.6 million. In our CIP funding, annual funding for street rehab is, is budgeted to increase up to $8 million annually. That would increase our PCI rating to approximately 69 over the five-year timeframe. And in the world of PCI ratings, a 70 is considered good. So even at $8 million, we're just not there at 70 yet with regard to the maintenance of our streets. So the city should consider, really take a business unit approach versus a government or general government approach. What I mean by business unit is through a street maintenance fee, we would, we would look at the proportional use of the city's transportation system. Who uses our streets more than others? What level does a commercial business use it versus a residential? So those factors would be looked at if we went down the street maintenance fee route to ensure that those who, who use our street system the most pay a little more than those who don't. This is, you know, so it's cost allocated for the demand of service. What's our service? And then we would allocate those costs, budget for those costs as needed to meet our demand. What this also does is that it enables the shift of tax-supported debt to cash on hand. So right now, the city spends, or will be spending, $8 million a year over the next five years for road rehab. We borrow those dollars through the issuance of certificates of obligation. The city has to pay that back, and actually, the customers, city residents and businesses have to pay, have to pay that back. So if we went with the street maintenance fee option, you know, the city, that would be cash on hand, city would collect those dollars, have those dollars, wouldn't have to go out and borrow those dollars, and pay those dollars back with, with an interest added on to what was borrowed. So it also allows us to kind of expand our CIP from just fixing what's broke. So you've seen this slide before, Mr. Bart Kobyak has presented this to the council in the past. This basically is a line graph showing the various conditions at, for various budget levels. I'm not going to go through each one of these lines on the graph, but the one at the top there shows, the dark solid blue shows the $318 million if we wanted to fix all of our streets in, within the next five years. Again, that would be at a cost of $62.4 million per year, which is not something the city can sustain currently. That would increase our PCI rate above 85. The next line down, that olive color, that is, that's, that would increase our PCI to about 72. That would target the backlog of streets that need to be repaired. That would cost the city 11.03 million a year. And then right below that line, that solid green color, that's the Beaumont's budget amount that we will be including in the budgets going forward for the next five years. That is 8 million a year, that's currently in the CIP. Again, that would not have us at the 70 PCI rating, but, but right below the PCI rating. And the solid red colored line, that's the steady state PCI rating, which is 67, PCI rating of 67, that would just keep the status quo, maintain what we currently have. So the next question with regard to, you know, what is this fee? It's a street maintenance fee that provides a stable funding source for the maintenance and operations of, of our transportation system. And what would the dollars include? It would include work performed by our, our city crews. Those dollars, currently, we pay our city crew out of the general fund. We could shift the payment of, of the crew from the general fund to the new street maintenance fund. These dollars would pay for street preservation, including a thin overlay, street rehabilitation, including base repairs and thicker asphalt overlays, emergency repairs, traffic operations, including signs, signals, and pavement markings. Again, what this fee does not include would be capacity improvements and construction of new roadways. So who would pay this fee? And I mentioned earlier, this would be paid by residents and businesses. This is typically collected through a regular local monthly water bill. It would be added to the monthly water bill and collected through that process. Fees can be charged with the following options for each utility customer within the city limits. So we could charge the full street maintenance fee, whatever that fee is determined to be, or we could charge a discounted fee if we wanted to include, you know, like income-based discounts, or if we wanted to include a senior citizen discount, we could do that as well. We could exempt certain entities from paying towards the fees, such as government-owned properties, schools, and universities. So a street maintenance fee typically has two categories. One is residential, which would include single family, multifamily, and the other would be commercial. And so I included here an example of the level of revenue the city of Beaumont could collect using a street maintenance fee. The rates that I include there in the middle, those are the city of Abilene's current rates that they charge for their fee for single family residential, multifamily residential, and commercial. The number of units there in the second column, those are Beaumont's actual number of residential, multifamily, and commercial units. So for residential, single family, the first row, if we, using this example and using the city of Abilene's rates, if we charged a rate of 8.75 for the 34,112 units, that would generate monthly almost $300,000 from our single family customers, which would be an annual revenue cost of almost $3.6 million. Residential, multifamily, at Abilene's rate, using this example of $8, that would generate monthly $16,144 for an annual rate of $193,732. And for commercial, this is using Abilene's lowest rate for commercial. Commercial properties are based on a tier structure, so there is a determination made per property or per commercial property in terms of the trip factor, the usage rate of those streets. So the lowest rate would be $45 for Abilene, and so I use the lowest rate in this example. That would generate about $2.1 million in annual revenue for a street maintenance fee, for a grand total of almost $5.9 million in total, total revenue. And this 5.9 doesn't include any, any discounts. This would be everyone paying the full fee. So these are some cities that, with the street maintenance fee, some cities call it a transportation user fee, some cities call it a roadway user fee. As you can see, Abilene's fee is 8.75 for monthly residential, single family, and go to, to the big city of Austin, that's $17.87 their single family customers pay on a, on a monthly basis. So it varies throughout these cities. So this example is just to show the council that, you know, these, these rates are different within, within various cities. And to the right, it shows many cities use a tier structure to determine rates for commercial businesses in terms of their usage of, of the city's street infrastructure. And as you can see there, College Station, their tier structure starts at a low rate of $20.35, but depending on the, the usage of the streets, the land designation, square footage of facilities, those factors are included in the calculation of the, the fees and the tier structure. There's, goes up to $295 for commercial businesses. I put at the very bottom there, Lumberton, city of Lumberton, our neighbor, they charge a street maintenance fee currently, and they have been charging that fee since 1995. So for the last 28 years, they, they've been charging a street maintenance fee. I actually called and talked to the city clerk last week, and, and she submitted over their ordinance and, and their, their fee structure. It's the same for a commercial, as you see on this slide, commercial is different in other cities except Colleen, they charge the same for residential and commercial, but, but Lumberton is, is currently charging this fee. And, you know, I was told by the city clerk last week that they collect $400,000 annually from this street maintenance fee. So the next slide here shows some of the pros and cons of the implementation of, of a street maintenance fee. The pros, the fee burden would be shared by all who live in Beaumont, property owners as well as renters. Once dedicated to street maintenance, it would be unpopular for future councils to redirect these dollars to pay for something else, because they would be restricted for street maintenance. It also frees up funds from the general fund, so that we could use general fund dollars for other sources and, and other needs of the city, because we would be able to shift those dollars for costs such as labor over to the new street maintenance fund. And it prevents the issuance of future debt. Again, currently, we, you know, we're planning to issue $8 million a year for debt, and what comes with the issuance of debt is, is interest on top of debt. You know, citizens pay that back through their property taxes. So they're paying, either way, they'll be paying the city, but when you issue debt, they're paying extra because of the interest charge on the, on the debt that the city has to secure for street rehab. So this would help prevent higher increases in the, in the property tax rate, because we wouldn't have to issue debt for, for these improvements. This would also, and could also help with the backlog of street repairs, and it could help to increase our PCI rating. On the flip side, on the cons side, businesses and residents, they may pay the same fee in each category. As you saw, Lumberton and Colleen, they pay the same fee, but we would hire a consultant to look into having a tier structure like many other cities have, so that residents don't pay the exact same as commercial businesses who use the streets, obviously, more than, than residents do. It could be divisive if on a tier system to address road impact usage, that's basically saying that, you know, our commercial customers may complain that they're in tier six and should be in tier five, so, so we'll obviously get complaints, but, but it, it could be divisive. So those are a couple of the cons related to the implementation of this street maintenance fee. So the next steps would be, if council desired to, to move forward in this direct, direction, would be to hire a consultant to come into Beaumont to examine our maintenance needs and costs, to come up with the, the fees that we would charge in order to cover our street maintenance needs. They would look at things like trip generator for the various types of land uses, development, they would develop the tier structure for those commercial uses. Upon completion of the study and determination of what those rates are, the street maintenance fee would be created by city ordinance. And in, at some cities, they include a sunset provision in their street maintenance fee ordinance that require council to, that require the fee to sunset after a certain period of time, such as 10 years, and if council didn't renew after a 10-year timeframe, the fee would, would expire. Some cities include that, some cities don't, and, and usually, it's a, it's a 10-year sunset fee in, in the cities that I've seen. Again, if approved by city council, we could begin implementation of this fee in fiscal year 2025. But I do want to add that council could consider having the voters, putting this to the voters to, to make a decision on the implementation of, of a street maintenance fee. City of Lumberton, when they did it 28 years ago, they did go to the voters. Waco currently, not Waco, Abilene, a few years ago, they went to the voters, the voters approved of these fees. So council could create an ordinance without going to the voters, or, or you could elect to have the voters make a determination as to whether this fee should be implemented here at Beaumont. Any questions or comment?
Councilman Giff?
We have had a street assessment fee, I believe, in the past here in Beaumont. Chris, do you know anything about that?
I think it was before my time, but I think it may have been a part of the sales tax, but I can't.
No, I think it was a street assessment. This is where historical memory, institutional memory comes into fact. I'll ask Councilman Samuel, do you, do you remember us having a, a street assessment? So I'll ask Councilman Samuel, do you remember us having a street assessment fee in the past?
I think we did. Late, yeah, late eighties. I wasn't here then, and I don't have that institutional knowledge, but I did check with city clerk, and she sent me the ordinance that was created in nineteen-eighty-nine, establishing the street. They call it a road user fee here at that time.
Right, so I'm kind of curious as to what the public's perception was when it was created, whether it's created by vote, and what caused it to go away. I think it would be important to research those things.
I have the answer to that, council member. In nineteen-eighty-nine, the ordinance was approved by city council, and in nineteen-ninety, the city council created a new ordinance to put it before the voters. And from what I could see in the research, the voters did not approve it in nineteen-ninety. So in eighty-nine, city council created the ordinance, but something occurred, and council decided the next year to put it before.
I think what occurred was a lot of pushback. And...
They didn't bring it to the voters, and so I think there was some pushback, and so in the following year, they brought it to the voters, and it failed.
And yet, you know, I heard recently as today, as, and I don't necessarily believe this, in fact, I don't believe it, but a constituent contacted me and said, you know, Beaumont has some of the worst streets anywhere, and I just know that's not right, but if there are people that believe that, maybe this is something we should consider bringing to the voters.
Councilman Neal, did you have a question?
I do have a question. The, once again, I mean, this is essentially a tax increase, I mean, because it's still money that you got to pay to the city. So my thoughts, one, I have no problem putting it out for the voters to decide, but going back off the example you used, June, it was going to raise about five million dollars, is that correct?
Five-point-eight, using Abilene's rates, correct.
All right, so five-point-eight million on the tax rate, Todd, what, how many cents does five-point-eight million cost? Sorry to put you in the spot.
Well, I think we said for thirty million, it would be two cents, so it'd be less than a cent.
Okay. I mean, I guess the decision for council, though, I mean, at the end of the day, it's a tax increase.
Yes, councilman.
Well, the difference is, I guess, Todd, for property tax rate, it's property tax owners, and this is a rate that would be shared by everybody, including renters, so it's spread out, and of course, renters have vehicles and use the roads too.
But renters pay taxes too, just not directly. Well, through rent.
Yeah.
I mean, at the end of the day, if you're bringing in more revenue with a tax increase.
Councilman Turner.
Come on, and I get what Taylor's saying, I understand it wholeheartedly, but you said the idea of this is to not actually continue to raise taxes in the future, right? It could somewhat offset it.
Yeah, yeah, that is true. I mean, currently, we issue certificates of obligation, we have to pay those back, you know, through our ad valorem tax rate every year, so this wouldn't be a tax increase in terms of, through the ad valorem tax process, but residents would have to pay the fee. And again, as I mentioned, with borrowing money, you have to pay interest, so, you know, the residents pay a little more with the interest.
Since it's a road user tax, is there any way that this could be collected through vehicle registration, so that if somebody has five cars, they're paying more than somebody that, you know, has one or none? And that way, there is a vehicle registration here that is done by address. That would be something that would have, those that don't have cars then aren't seeing any increase.
I've seen it more on, like, larger trucks that will pay a different fee. I haven't seen with more cars, but I guess because larger trucks have more weight and do more damage to your street, sometime I've seen them differentiated.
Councilman Duria.
You know, part of your registration, I don't know if they still do it, but at one time, they did have a road and bridge fee on part of your car registration. I don't know if that goes to the county.
Yeah, that's a...
They get that. But also, I mean, I'm pretty sure everybody sitting up here, you get calls every day about the streets, and we need to do something about it, and this is a way to do it, and a way to pay for it, and bring more money into the coffers and use money in their general fund for other things. So I think it's something that we should seriously consider.
I don't disagree that it's something to consider. I was just wondering if it is something we could be, that could be associated with each vehicle. People that have four vehicles pay more than people that have one, and if it's collected rather than through the water bill, collected through the county, but I guess there would be a cost for that, so.
Yeah, and I haven't seen that mayor done that way, not to say that it can't be done, but we could definitely look into it if council wants us to move forward with the consideration of a street maintenance fee.
Okay.
Because we would have to hire a consultant anyway to help determine what the various fees should be.
Any other comments?
I, for one, would be interested. I'd be interested also in the number of ways that we could collect, if the water bill's the only way.
We'd like another water increase.
Right.
No, I'm interested in, as long as it's going to go to the voters.
Mm-hmm, right.
That sounds like consensus that we should prepare something to take to the voters. We can only go to the voters twice a year, in May and November, so this November would probably be too short of a timeframe, so may have, well, we would have to hire the consultant to come up with the, what the fees would be, educate the public on what their fees are, so that we may not have enough time to take it to the voters this November.
We can work through the logistics, June, if whatever council wants to do. We can just work with and come back, give them a report.
Okay. Well, I'm going to suggest we take a thirty-minute break, because we may be working well up to, close to three o'clock for our next meeting, so we'll recess for thirty minutes.
Okay. Next, lunch in the downstairs conference room.
We'll call the meeting back to order. June?
Thank you, Council and Mayor. Moving on to the third and final revenue option for the city, and this is beautification for the city of Beaumont, donation option on water bills. This was also something Mr. Turner asked for us to look into, and this is something that the city can move forward with. So the city can set up a fixed amount beautification fee that citizens can opt into that will be billed monthly on their water bill. Some cities do allow this option. Again, it's optional, you know, resident isn't required to pay this fixed amount. Staff recommended the amount at $2. A water customer can opt in or opt out at any time. They would just contact the water department here at City Hall and make a request to opt in or opt out. The city will be able to automatically deduct this amount monthly if a customer is set up on auto draft. So it would be part of their bill. So when they pay their bill through auto draft or through a credit card or come to City Hall to pay their bill, they would also pay this $2 donation or beautification amount to the city as well. The city can start this on October 1, the beginning of the fiscal year, if council so chooses that we move in this direction. Staff will set up a new fund in our financial system. We can call it the beautification fund, and those dollars each month will be deposited into that fund from the collections of residents. Those donations will be used to beautify needs throughout the city, including but not limited to supplies for the citywide cleanup. So as we have citywide cleanup events throughout Beaumont, we could use these dollars to purchase bags and gloves and other needs for the citywide cleanups. Trees and flowers can be planted throughout the city using these donated dollars, public art and murals, painting throughout the city, brightening up the city and the areas surrounding, public transportation landmarks and public spaces like parks and fields, purchase of trash receptacles. So those are the types of things that these dollars would be used for in the beautification fund. So again, as I mentioned, this is something that can easily be set up. We've talked to the water customer supervisor, and he informed us this can be done. And we plan to, you know, council gives okay, we plan to implement this beginning October 1. Any questions or comments?
Councilman Felschall. What type of revenue do you see this generating? Have you calculated it out?
We haven't done a calculation.
Potential, I know you don't know who's going to opt in or out, but what do you think the potential is? You haven't done that?
We haven't done that, Matt, sir. Sorry.
Councilman Getz.
Who would decide what projects that the fund would go towards?
I would say that would be the city manager would make that determination through the budget process. So this would be like any other budget item throughout the fiscal year. As staff, as council have priorities, you know, as we prepare the budget, we would consider those priorities and ensure that the dollars are used in line with what they're budgeted for.
Councilman Turner.
Taylor, it is optional, okay?
Any other questions?
Yes, Mayor.
Yes.
Have you seen where this option has worked in other cities, and was it successful? Do you know?
Even my last city that I worked for, Haskell in West Texas, we had it on the water bills. It was successful. We used it for purchasing trash receptacles, beautifying the downtown square, planting trees, flowers in parks. So it's can be successful.
We had it in Lufkin, too, there, so it worked there.
Any other questions or concerns, comments? Okay.
We will get this implemented for October 1. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ellis. And I just want to thank you, that was a great presentation that you just put on, very informative, appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you. I got one more to go.
Okay.
All right, so this is an overview of the bond election process. So staff provided city council the five-year capital improvement plan a few weeks ago, and you saw those big dollar amounts in the plan, over $300 million to haulers over five years. You saw where certain funding requirements were color-coded, and some of those showed that city would like to issue GO bonds, which would require an election of the voters. That was included for fiscal year to begin in fiscal year 2025. So staff wanted to come before council to give council an overview of how the process works. A bond election in Texas allows voters to decide whether a local government may borrow money for a specific purpose. Cities, counties, school districts all use bond debt to finance new schools, highways, bridges, bike ways, fire stations, parks, and other infrastructure within a community. The city of Beaumont hasn't held an election in the past 18 years and possibly longer than than that. And our five-year CIP that we provided to city council, it assumes a bond election in November of 2024. Bond elections are routine in many cities. Some cities hold bond elections every three to six years. I worked for the city of Pearland for seven years, and we had one and we had one bond election while I was there, and we have one during my, as I was leaving the city. Pearland had a bond election recently in 2019, and they had a bond election exactly one month ago in May, on May 6. So that's four years in the city of Pearland. Sugar Land has a lot of bond elections, and I know those are growing communities. But other communities such as Abilene tend to have regular bond elections where they go to the citizens with large expenditures. We may spend $20, $25 million on a CO, but bond elections normally include large, large dollar amounts. For example, Pearland that just approved their bond election, their citizens approved theirs last month, a month ago, for their bond election. It was $131 million. There were four propositions, and the voters approved all four of those propositions for that election. So they can be successful. And it's good to go to the voters, especially when you issue general obligation bonds. So the parties involved in a bond election, it includes a governmental entity or the issuer. The city would be the issuer. That's the mayor, council, city management, city staff. We would have our financial advisor as well involved in the process to provide staff and council tax rate analysis to let the citizens know the impact on future tax rates from the bond election. Financial advisor would also provide information such as the issuance of the bonds. If a bond election, we held a bond election in November of 2024. We wouldn't have to sell all the bonds that same month or the next month. We would sell those bonds over a certain period of time, depending on when the city plans to start the various projects. Bond council is always involved in bond elections. Other staff or parties involved, election administrator, election consultants, if needed. I've never worked anywhere where we needed an election consultant, but obviously some cities do require an election consultant, and the voters are all involved in the bond election process. So the role of the bond council, they're involved because of election matters. They're hired and represent the city. They assist the city with planning and calling the election. They draft all election documents, provide detailed instructions for posting and publication. They advise and assist with election strategies. They review informational material, and they pre-clear propositions with the Attorney General. Cities do have the legal authority for bond election. Beaumont is a home rule city in the state government code, Title IX, Chapter 1251. It allows a city to issue tax bonds for projects. It's in state statutes, and some cities have it in their city charter as well. Authorized purposes for tax bonds. Those bonds would be used for permanent public improvements and other public purposes. City elections and the financing of those elections, capital improvement projects are funded through different means. Some are funded through certificates of obligation, which do not require voter authorization, or revenue bonds for water and sewer projects. City operating funds, such as the general fund, water fund, our fund balance dollars can fund capital projects. The city receives grants that are allowed to fund capital projects. Private funding sometimes is used for capital projects as well as other governmental agencies. As we partner with other agencies, they help with funding capital improvement projects. You know, a bond is a debt security issued by a local government and bought by investors in exchange for a promise of future repayment and interest. As we, if we go to the voters and they approve the proposition, city would issue general obligation bonds. These are typically used to fund capital improvement projects that will serve the community. Again, this is, these are approved through the voter approval process. GO bonds are raised for projects such as roads, bridges, parks and trails, city facilities such as fire stations, police departments, recreation centers, public work facilities, et cetera. And these dollars cannot be used for operating costs. These are only to be used for capital expenditures. GO bonds are backed by the full faith and credit of a city. This means that a city is obligated to pay back the bonds by pledging its ad valorem taxing power. So the payment of these bonds are paid back through property taxes on city residents and businesses. So I'll go through the actual process in order to hold a bond election. And number one, there is also repeated on number six on the next slide. But the governing body would call a, the governing body of a city or the city council would have to call a bond election. That's sometimes done on the front end of the bond election. If the city council knows when they will hold a bond election, then sometimes it's done, normally it's done after city council hears from the bond committee. And that's what council would do with number two on this list. City council will vote to establish a bond committee. So the city council will determine the makeup of that committee. Normally, council members appoint two or three members of the community to serve on the bond committee to help provide information on what project should be included in a bond package that should go before the voters. So the bond committee meets with city staff to determine the needs of the city and the cost of each project. City staff is heavily involved in this process. City staff will meet with the bond committee on a regular basis, city management, as well as city council. So the city, so the bond committee considers what projects will be recommended for placement before the voters for consideration. And working with staff, working with the financial advisor, the bond committee would make recommendations on the bond amount and the issuance of the timing schedule. The bond committee will hold meetings, community meetings, to inform and seek input of the city's needs. So Beaumont residents may be surveyed to assess the wants and needs of the community. The bond committee makes recommendations to city council for projects. So that committee, once they've met with staff, surveyed the community, held various public meetings within the community. They would determine what they would recommend in a bond package to go before the voters, and they would bring that to city council and present that to city council for your consideration. And at that time, many cities call the bond election, which is number six. Bond elections can be held twice a year in May or November, which are the uniform election dates for a city. After city council calls a bond election, the bond committee, city council, limited staff attend community meetings to inform of the projects and the cost. So the bond committee, the mayor, city council, certain staff members attend various city council meetings, whether they're neighborhood associations or larger meetings at other events throughout the city to inform the public about the items that are, will be put before the voters. And the election is held on one of those uniform dates. Votes are cast, tabulated, canvassed, like any election. And there would be several, could be several propositions for bond election. Those will be broken into categories such as roads. There would be a proposition for roads and one for buildings and one for drainage and other projects. And they can all be, they would be put before the voters. Some may pass, all may pass, some may fail, all may fail. But normally, you have propositions for various categories for a bond election. So the bonds are issued, those that are passed, bonds are issued. And, you know, bonds are used to pay for those projects that the citizens voted in favor for. And again, those are, the bonds do not have to be issued or all at the same time. Normally, they're not. They're spread out over a couple of years, depending on when the projects are planned for the city. So as you will see in the five-year CIP, beginning in fiscal year 2025, we do have some projects listed for '25, '26, '27. So if we went to the voters and those were the projects from the bond committee, we would issue bonds over, you know, two or three years as opposed to issuing bonds all at one given time. That's the end of my presentation. Any questions or comments?
Councilman Neal.
All right, so just going based off of the CIP, I think the number that was on there at the back was $353 million. So just talk round numbers for me. The, let's say, everything passed. What does that look like as far as a tax rate increase?
Maybe a question for Todd.
Okay, so out of the $353 million, $96 million would be in water and sewer revenues funds. $58 million would be in the general obligation bond that would go to the voter, and $80 million would go for certificates of obligation. So that's $235 million would need to be financed through bonds.
How much would?
$235 million. The rest of it's covered with grants and cash that's available on hand right now through future bond proceeds. And like I said earlier, on the CO side, on the certificates of obligation side, you know, of course, we would need to talk to bond council and the finance guy, you know, for this. But usually, you want to do that like every two to three years. You don't want to issue all five years at one time because the market could change, interest rates are, we're hoping are going to go back down, things like that. You don't want to hold too much cash and before you can spend it all, because then you get into arbitration issues and such. On the GO side, and talking to our financial advisor, he said sometimes when school districts do large GOs, they can, you know, have in excess of $100 million GO. And so they just, they do issues periodically. They don't do the whole $100 million upfront. I think they said they have authority to, once it's approved by the voters, each proposition can go in phases, and they have that authorization for, I think he said, 10 to 12 years. So you don't need to issue those bonds immediately, even on the GO side, once it's approved, you can walk through phases. But like I said before, you know, for every $30 million that we issue on the tax side, that's a $0.02 tax increase. And for the water side, I think when I said for every $25 million, that would be a 3% water and sewer rate increase.
So round numbers, that for the $235 million would be, that's about a $0.16 increase, right? 15 point something.
Well, okay, for the first two, for the CO and the GO, that's about $138 million. If you divide that by $25 million, it's basically five and a half. So five and a half times, times the $0.02, that'd be like an $0.11 increase over those five years. And then the revenue bond, that's $96 million. $96, so that's 3.2. That'd be like an 11% increase on water and sewer rates. That's over the whole five years. And that's if council wants to authorize, you know, all those projects.
That's over five years, but you pay for it for how long?
What's that?
That's over five years, but you pay for it for how long?
So you can issue bonds in 20 years, 25, or 30? In the past, I've tried to, when I could, do a 20-year bond. This last one we did was a 25-year bond, and the reason why, I'll give you an example. So the last bond that we issued in February was $25 million. Over a 20-year period, the estimated cost to repay that $25 million was $41 million. If you did it over 25 years, it would go up to $45.5 million. And if you go to 30 years, it costs you $51 million. So obviously, the shorter the time period, the less interest you pay. But you got to work it in with your budget parameters.
And all of this would be clearly laid out. That's why we would have our financial advisor involved. It would be clearly laid out by the financial advisor to the public, to the city council, to provide the information that Todd provided and any additional information on tax rate implications.
Councilman Felschau.
I'm assuming it's obvious that the key to success on something like this is how well we communicate this to the public.
Absolutely. You definitely need a really good educational campaign to the public by staff, by city management, by council and the mayor. That's how, from my experience, I've seen these pass in Pearland. The mayor would, once they got the recommendation from the bond committee, the mayor would hold community meetings with council there. And it's been successful. When I was there many years ago, they always passed their bond elections. And as I mentioned just last month, you know, unanimous passing of all of their bond propositions because they really do educate the public very well.
Any other questions?
Did you say it had been over 18 years that you, since the city of Beaumont has done this?
And I only use 18 years because Todd has been here 18 years, and he said we haven't had a bond election.
Yeah, I don't recall a bond election.
Do you have any idea why we have not had a bond election in that period of time?
I don't. I've been in this position for six years. What the prior CFO and city manager, I'm not sure. You know, usually you go to, you know, the public for a vote on a general obligation bond when it's not critical infrastructure. And, you know, like we said in the past, if you bring the, if you bring it to a vote for the citizens and they vote it down, then your only choice of doing those projects is to convince them the next election or you suspend your elections for three years and issue a CO. So there's always a chance, you know, that your project won't get done if you go to the voters. So that's why we usually do critical infrastructure. Like, I'm assuming that's why they've done critical infrastructure in the past through a certificate of obligation. Plus, you can get into the market at any time as opposed to waiting on the two election cycles.
So things like the event center, that was done through a CO?
I believe so. I mean, like I said, I wasn't the CFO when the event center was built. But when I looked at my debt service book, I didn't see any current issues of general obligation bonds. We have refunded a lot of general obligation bonds since I've been with the city, taking advantage of lower rates. But to my recollection, I don't remember going out for a general.
And are we still paying principal and interest on some previously issued general obligation?
We are, but through a refunding bond. So our interest rate's a lot lower now.
Yes, Chris.
Could I just add a little bit to that? My recollection was, when I first started with the city, there were a lot of bonds that were being paid off. In addition, we had a lot of revenue coming from hurricanes. And so I think some of the things that may have been GO issues, I think may have been paid for. And so I think some of the things that may have been G O issues, I think, may have been paid for with cash.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
We've got a council meeting in one hour.
One more presentation.
Yeah, if we can get through this, we have recreational programs we we had. This kind of kind of derives from the last workshop. We had comments from council members about recreational programs, and they would like to hear an item on it. So we have Mr. Jimmy Neal, our recreation director here today to do. And then have a discussion with you.
Make sure I have this thing figured out properly. Not too tough, is it? Thank y'all for having me up here. As Manager Williams said, this is kind of in response to some things that have come up recently. I'll just kind of give you a little bit of background quickly. We've never done this. As a city, we've never run recreational youth leagues. You've got, and you'll see these in the slides, we've got so many other sports that do take place that other entities organize and run those. In the last few years, Little Dribblers in Beaumont has dissipated. When I was coming up, you had West NY M C A Little Basketball, you had Downtown Y M C A. You've had upward basketball. Obviously, you've got A A U, you've got these kids that that play basketball, a bunch of different avenues. Most of those things have kind of fallen by the wayside. My son is ten. He played upward last year. First time he had ever played, and it came about in about a two week span, literally as quickly as that. People at Legacy contacted a bunch of kids, a bunch of parents, and the next thing you know, they had. I think four teams per age division for, I think, three age divisions. Very minimal, very small. Entertaining. These kids were not highly competitive. They were not tournament players. My son absolutely is not. But it was it was enjoyable. It was a really, really good experience. So what you kind of see with youth sports nowadays. If you pay attention to the media, which of course we all do. I don't want to say youth sports are out of control. I made my living as a coach and a trainer for so many years. So the last thing I'm going to do is say it's out of control. However, you're having problems in every sport with officials. You're having problems with coaches. You're having problems with parents. You're having problems with the players. People kind of getting out of hand. I saw an instance a couple of months ago where a base, a high school baseball umpire was assaulted. Of course, it's on video because everything's on video nowadays. This guy was assaulted because he called the kid out. After the game was over, kid's dad assaulted the umpire, knocked the umpire out. He was a sixty plus year old veteran. And the guy, you know, he's pressing charges and doing all that. So what that means for us is that, not us necessarily as a city, but as a whole. High school baseball is having a hard time finding umpires. High school football having a hard time finding officials. Basketball is the same thing. And those people get paid a lot more than somebody who goes out and referees a Little Dribblers game. The benefit to refereeing Little Dribblers game is you get to do about four or five of them. So if you're making forty bucks a pop, you get four games, you make one hundred and fifty, two hundred dollars, you're good to go. If you go do a high school game, you may get seventy five, a hundred dollars, and then you got to deal with a lot more of the stuff. So just kind of wanted to give you a little bit of the background to it. As I said, we've never done that. This has never been what Parks and Rec or Rec now was really tasked with. We'll go in through, go into some of the things that we actually are doing, and then some other things. It comes up really well. So adult softball. Cities run this league for over forty years. When I was a kid, I watched my dad play in that league. He was about as good at softball as my son is at basketball, but it was still fun. That complex has been there forever. We still have three seasons, a spring, a summer, and a fall league. Sometimes you'll have up to ninety teams. Normally, you got anywhere from fifty to sixty. Just depends. We have seen kind of across the board. That adult sports participation, organized sports, is kind of starting to go down. You're getting more kids involved, and so the the adults are not quite participating as much in their. They may be doing it individually, but as far as group team sports, not as much. We've got a tennis league organized and managed through SETA, Southeast Texas Tennis Association, which is a local volunteer organization. You're going to see another slide here in a few minutes. We just started a pickleball league. You knew I had to come up here and talk about pickleball. So we just started a pickleball league last night, as a matter of fact. We are not running it. There's another volunteer who's running the league. We're setting it. We we give them the facility. They go out there and they participate. You've got over two hundred and fifty players currently participating. It's SETA's league. Play at Beaumont Eastwood Tennis Center. Summer track. We've got a hundred and fifty three kids in our program this summer. This program has been going on for over thirty years. I remember when I was in high school, I did not look this way. Roy Washington, who is still running the track program, invited me to participate then. So he's been doing a phenomenal job of this for over thirty years. We've got some high school coaches, some other trainers that Coach Washington brings on board. They go do some local meets, some regional meets, and they travel to a state meet. And this is all funded through the department. So now you're going to see some of these additional options that we've got. Youth basketball. This is pretty small print, so I'll make sure I can see it. The proposal that we would do would would have three divisions of play, as you see. Seven eights, nine tens, eleven and twelves. The idea behind those age groups is that kids get into seventh grade, they can play for their school. So a lot of times, kids are not participating in league play once they can play for their school. Try to do this. Again, this is this is just kind of a mock up of what ideally I would do. Eight teams, eight week season, everything meshes pretty well. The issues we would run into with basketball would be facilities. We've got one gym. You can turn the Pruitt Center site, you can go east and west, and you can have two two courts going at the same time. But in order to get all these teams to practice, if you just follow this procedure here, this protocol, and you've got twenty four teams playing. You're going to need to have, what is that, I guess, twelve, twelve hours of practice time per week for each team to get two practices. That's going to be really tough to do. Little Dribblers did this through B I S D. They had cooperation with B I S D. Probably, I would assume, the whole time. I don't think they just went rogue and jumped into their gyms. In my times at Little Dribblers, I played at Marshall, I played at Austin, played at Vincent, played at Caldwell, played at Regina Howell. So a lot of these schools used to work with with Little Dribblers. We would probably, we would definitely need to do something along those lines. Staffing, we would have to open and close these gyms. We'd have to provide referees. Each player would receive a jersey. We'd have tryouts. I think one of the issues that the last couple of years of Little Dribblers were that. You'd have a lot of kids try out, but then you'd also have these select teams that would show up and play in the league. When you got a bunch of kids trying out, playing against a select team that plays every weekend and travels, you got some. You got some bad matchups, and that didn't really work out well, and the numbers dwindled because of that. At least that's what people have shared with me through the years. So we would host tryouts. These coaches, something when you when you have adult sports like we do with adult softball, we don't have to vet the coaches. We don't need to get them to pass a background check. Anything youth sports wise, and you're going to see this with football as well. Is that these coaches are volunteers, and they're going to have to pass background checks. There's plenty of organizations that do provide those. My current experience, I'm on the West End Little League Board. The amount of time that the twelve board members put in to run that league is absurd. I I had no idea the amount of time and energy it took to do so, and we've got so many volunteers out there. We overs six hundred and fifty kids in that league, and just the amount of time is is just unbelievable. So you got a lot of lot of time to go through your background checks, to try to schedule practices for these people. To be able to get their games and in their team to work out in. When I say right here, the purchase of four goals for the under ten foot goal will be necessary. Pruitt Center does not have smaller goals, so if we're going to use the Pruitt Center, we'd need more goals to be able to utilize those courts. Next, we've got flag football. What we try not to do up here is give our opinion very often. We try to stick to the facts. Whether you are a proponent of flag football or tackle football really is completely up to you. Flag football is exploding. What you're getting is most of these high school kids play seven on seven. And that's no tackle, no pads needed, and they get prepared for high school, college football, whatever it may be. Flag is just kind of a different version of that. You see, you've got three different organizations up there that we listed. NFL Flag, USA Football, and American Flag Football League. All of these provide all that background information that I spoke about with volunteer coaches. They would provide, depending on which group we would go with, they provide equipment that's needed to set up the field. You can purchase essentially player kits that have the belts, the flags, and everything else you're going to need there, footballs, and you have it. So you see up there, again, similar age groups, age divisions. As I said, we would do something similar for each sport. Seven on seven playing rules essentially. Depending on the age group, probably twelve to fifteen players per team. Just kind of play, let it play out, see how many kids sign up. Again, weekday practices, try to do Saturday games. Referees provided, coaches, background check. Again, you see the same thing. Staffing, we would mark the fields. We'd set them up for gameplay. Where this would change for us is that we are not currently created. With the staff to run leagues. Like I said, we we run the adult softball league. We've got park staff, lines of fields. We have one employee that works at night. When the league games are going on, he's out there. He makes sure the umpires are where they're supposed to be. Make sure the the teams that are supposed to be playing on Field A are on Field A. We've got a schedules posted. He's out there three nights a week during league play. That's the only time he's there. We would need people out here for this youth football. We would have to have staff out there assisting constantly. So we would need to. We would, more than likely, the proposal would be that we would try to add a full time position. And we would increase the duties of one of our current full time staff members. We would need probably a minimum of five new part time employees to be able to do this. We go into tackle football. All these are essentially the same thing, different names, Pop Warner, NFL Play, and USA Football. Locally, what you're going to find is is if you go to Dick's Sporting Goods, I don't know if it was last weekend, but i- it's coming up soon. You go to Dick's Sporting Goods on Saturday coming up soon, you're going to see a thousand kids there. What this youth, this USA Football does, they set up shop right outside of Dick's Sporting Goods at the mall, and they hold all of their registration there. And I'm telling you, there are a thousand kids there. There are so many people there. We've got all the small towns around us. Let's say small, that's probably not proper. Port Neches, Needland, Bridge City, West Orange, Little Cypress. Hampshire, Fennett, Salisbury, and Port Arthur already have leagues. We do too. Beaumont does as well. You've got Beaumont Timberwolves. And you've got the West Beaumont, I believe, Bulldogs. What kind of the gist of this is to tie these schools in or these teams into their schools. So they kind of go that direction. Most of them have about twenty kids per team, some have more. We could practice throughout the park system, weekday practices, Saturday games. Referees provided, again, like we've done with everything else. To to keep from boring you, you'll see all the same information that we've done with the other two. And lastly, I already covered this. Pickleball just started last night. League play will begin summer twenty twenty three. I kind of lied because summer, I think, is officially in two weeks, so we're not quite there yet. But that's what we've got for pickleball as well. This this really shows everything that that we can propose that the options would be. If you look at the baseball model, again, baseball is where I come from, so that's what I know best. I can perfectly understand every other sport as well. With the baseball model. A lot of people are going to tournament play. Basketball is very similar. You go into tournament play. Football, flag football and seven on seven, they go to tournament play. Obviously, you're not going to play a football, a tackle football tournament. Because you can't play more than one game in a day. That would just beat you to death. So what you're really seeing people do is their weekends. Look at Ford Park. I mean, that's why it's grown so much. And it's so busy is that people are used to tournament play. And tournament play can happen Friday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. It can happen one day, it can happen two days. We host tournaments at the Pruitt Center. What that allows people to do is is you can, you don't have to be a part of an organization. You know, you don't have to be Little League or U triple S A or Super Series or USA Football. You can be whoever you want to be. You're your own entity, your own team. You meet the criteria and you show up and you play the event, and when the event's over, you're done. You're finished. So that's what you're seeing a lot of people go to. And lastly, what you're going to see is here's just kind of a list of some of the organizations we have locally. You've got an adult flag football league that does play different locations throughout Beaumont and other area, other smaller towns. You've got adult soccer. There's a beach volleyball group that plays out at the athletic complex. It's not really a league. But they're there three to four nights a week and every every weekend. B Y S C, I played in B Y S C a hundred and fifty years ago. Dynamo Dash Soccer Club, they're huge. Gulf Coast Youth Softball uses it. The girls use our softball complex. Obviously, Little League Baseball, Select Baseball, Select Softball, and at the top, I for whatever reason overlooked A A U Basketball. But these are all the things that are offered locally. They're also, they tie in some of them with national. And that's, there you have it. That concludes what I've got. Any questions?
Councilman Turner.
Thank you. The presentation was insightful. One thing that I realized that you've done and it's been successful is your partnerships. I noticed you had the partnership with SETA, and you also had the partnership with the pickleball. I think even with flag, even with football, I think the biggest concern is like the feeder program. Maybe catch them at flag at maybe four, five, six, seven, and kind of let them feed into the the tackle with the responsibility. I like the fact that you explored tackle, but I kind of understand what you're saying. I don't know if we need to go as far as tackle. Because they have those teams that they feed into once they get going, but the teach them the basic fundamentals and get them going. Maybe four, five, six, seven, and let them feed into those teams. I think that's another opportunity for partnership. Most of those teams, one of the main thing they're missing is just somewhere to actually play in and and practice at. Right now, in the city of Beaumont, we really don't have any football fields for them to play on. The only thing they kind of have is they practice out there in front of Westbrook, just randomly in the open fields.
They practiced there when I was at Westbrook. I know you you wouldn't go to that part of part of town, but when we were at Westbrook, those kids were practicing out there. We were mad. Because we felt like they were on our property. We we felt like they took our spot.
So I think the main thing with as far as that is looking for, you know, somewhere just for the city to say, okay. We'll create this environment for you guys to practice in. I think that would be a relief, and it'll take some of the pressure off as far as trying to stretch staff out to. Do so many things, maybe a partnership with that. Also, with with youth basketball. Like, I I'm a referee, and I understand, I understand that part, but also it may be another opportunity to kind of partner with a group. One of the main reasons Little Dribblers fell apart is it just got too expensive for them. You know, like, once those parents pay that initial small fee and you paying the gym rental fees, and before you know it. You're running out of revenue to kind of sustain a league. The volunteers were there. The problem was it just the expenses outweighed the the league. And the long term gain from it, those kids just having some positive do is even more beneficial. So I think it'll be good to kind of keep exploring those partnerships versus. You know, staff coming in and just taking it over. And it it's some groups out there that has willingness to step up and partner. I know one group, I think, met with Kenny when when he when he first got the city manager job. So I just think those partnerships is proven, is working. I know at Waco, that's what they do, exactly the model you're doing right now. They're not doing all those leagues, but they're just partnering with these different entities that's seeing them through.
Well, I know what a lot of them do, and I don't, you know, hey, when someone says, I don't mean to cut you off, but I'm going to cut you off anyway, so. But what you normally see is schools. You see so many schools that work with them to be able to utilize those fields. I mean, everyone played at different locations growing up. I played junior cardinal for one year. And we practiced at what is the existing, the current Amelia Elementary School. The old Amelia was moved. We just practiced in an open field, but we knew the Colts had that field. You know, it was it was a given. That's where the Colts were going to be. Cardinals were down the street, and someone else was there. So you kind of just found your spot and and stayed claimed to it, I guess, is a simple way to put it. What we've run into, obviously with our department, is people just go out and practice, and no one ever reaches out to us. And so then we get told that we're not letting people use the field. It's not always entirely true. No one calls us. I a lot of times I hear it from you, but none of these people reach out to us. They they never want to find out what it will take. For people to utilize some of those fields, there's no fee. You know, we'd love for them to be out there. The more people are using our facilities, the better. I mean, that's a good thing. And what we're doing at Sprott Park is only going to make this even better.
Councilman Neil.
Thank you, Mayor. So Councilman Turner, specifically talking about basketball. I mean, the only people that I know that have gyms are schools and churches. And like Jimmy was saying, you know, forever, all these facilities were using these schools, and then for whatever reason, it just stopped. Has have we reexplored any of that on what happened or what it would take to get that going again?
For for me, with Little Dribblers, I I understand the reason that they quit using those schools is because of the fees. Like that, it it just got very expensive. They weren't charging the parents to come in. So it's kind of like grandparents, aunties, uncles would just come out and watch the games, so it didn't really offset the expenses. But the biggest problem were the fees, and that's what kind of deteriorated the Little Dribbler League. That's why I was trying to figure out a way. Dribbler League. That's why I was trying to figure out a way that maybe we can step in and partner and let it rejuvenate to kind of take some of that upfront pressure off of them versus, you know, hiring a lot of staff to do it.
So is there a way to get some type of interlocal agreement with the school district in the city to where maybe we could be the key holder for those facilities on certain hours?
Well, I can add that we've, we've begun discussions with the school district, and we've talked to some churches. So we're in discussion at this point. So, but it's not worked out. So we're just getting started.
Mayor, I'll add that one of the discussions with the, it was the Midnight Basketball League, and we had some discussions. And we had the school district at the table. And they were agreeable to the school age kids participating, having games at their school gyms, but not the older people with the Midnight Basketball League. So in that case, they, they seemed amenable to a league being played in their facilities.
Yes.
Jimmy, on the basketball, as far as the younger kids, is there a possibility, can they play their games on some of our outside covered courts?
That would be something I've never seen done. Not, not here in Beaumont, Texas. And thinking of outdoor covered courts, we've got Cottonwood. We've got Alice Keith, I believe is still covered, if my memory serves me right. I don't think there's much else in the way of covered courts. I think what you, you, yeah, Sprott, Sprott would be one as well. I mean, you kind of run the risk of, of weather. You know, those courts, when they're not, they're not really surfaced like a tennis court is, they don't have the same type of ground on them, the same type of surfacing to them. So I think if, if you get any type of weather, you're going to have some issues.
You got Charlton Pollard Park, the Terrill Park, they've got covered courts.
Charlton Pollard's not, that's not covered.
Yeah.
Terrill is, Charlton Pollard's not. It's, it's just one side court. It's only one goal with a basketball, with a tennis court and one goal.
Has a covered pavilion.
Got a covered pavilion, not a covered basketball court.
And the athletic complex has a covered court.
Yes, sir. Yeah, over at Tennis Center. Yeah, that, that would be something that we've never done. And I think it would be very unusual, especially in this, this area to do something like that outside. If, if that's your only option, and people are going to do whatever they can. But I've never seen that done basketball wise.
Councilman Turner, and then Councilman Gitts.
Something that's, that's becoming a little bit popular out here, and I know some groups are already doing it. And another thing is just facilities and areas to do it in. I don't know if it's room in one of those little rooms at the rec for maybe the boxing. We, we got kids that go out, they do it, and maybe just trying to shed them into something more positive. It's nonprofit groups that actually do the boxing right now. So would that be something if a private group would come in and manage it, and the city just provide the little space for them to do it in? I'm just trying to think of all the ways we can give the kids that are actually out there doing bad things, like something positive to do.
Well, I don't know if they could use the side rooms or not. We have had some boxing events at the Pruitt Center, where guys come in and set up a ring and
You had a real nice boxing show over there.
And really get after it. I don't know if the side rooms will work. I'm sure you could for training. You know, you can probably do some work in there.
Have you thought anything about kickball?
We've talked, you know, a few years back, when I was program coordinator, I proposed a league, because a lot of people talked about it. But when I put it out there as a league, nobody wanted to do it. That was nine, 10 years ago. We could easily put it out there again. Usually what you find with kickball is a lot of the people that play softball go to kickball, and they kind of go back and forth. Your soccer kids, you think would be really into it, but soccer's, it seems like once these kids get into soccer, it's year round. And so they, they don't really get that leash to do other things. Kickball's, it's, it, the expense on us is very minimal. The facilities are already there at the complex especially. There's been people that have gone out and had kickball tournaments, but we've never been able to get a league. We could, we could easily offer it again and see what happens. We've done that with volleyball through the years. We offered a sand volleyball league. People wanted it. Once we officially offered it, they didn't sign up. But, you know, all you can do is offer it and see what happens.
And I think also, one thing that's been mentioned is partnering with the school district, and I'll be able to get some of the information out to the school age students during the school year for these programs, so that we could, you know, get more participation.
That does well for the track program, definitely. We can get all, get all this stuff pushed out through, through the schools, and those kids just eat it up. And, and the success of the program at least speaks for itself. They do a great job.
Right. Okay.
So just to Mayor Council, Mr. Manager, I understand we had the presentation today. Are we looking at exploring some of the proposals and looking at direction from the council? Kind of where are we at right now at this point?
Yes, Councilmember Turner, we wanted the feedback. You, you wanted the agenda items. So we wanted the feedback on what you were wanting, you know, for your goal product for this particular topic. So we really need to identify what you're really interested in us exploring. And then we can research it, come back with the report. Jimmy can report back to you feasibility of it or whatever. We'll do it, whatever we need to do.
I'd love to find out what Mayor West can get over to us from, as far as the discussions with B I S D. That would, that would definitely help us to be able to find out what direction we can conceivably go.
We're attempting to get another meeting scheduled right now. And they're very agreeable. It's just about getting a number of people in the same room at the same time. So that's being worked on in an email chain right now. But preliminary discussions indicated they were very receptive to partnering with the city.
Anything else? All right. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Now we're at Councilmember comments, and I'm going to remind you all, we have 30 minutes before council meeting starts, where we'll have council member comments again. So I'll start on this side. Councilman Neil.
Councilman Turner.
Yeah, thank you to staff for preparing everything. I know it's not easy getting all those things together. And like, I'm pretty sure we'll be open minded and explore some of these options and see what we can do to make this city better. All right. Thank y'all.
Councilman Gitts.
These work sessions have been needed. They're educational, they're informative, and, you know, I'm glad we're doing them and look forward to continuing to pursue the process. Thank you.
Oh, just thank you to the manager and the staff for your presentations today. Very informative, and I'm sure they're going to be very helpful. And that's it. A few next steps, Mayor. We'll go and department heads will meet with the administration and the chief financial officer. We'll actually compile a draft budget based on their departments. Then they'll come back to you. We'll have another one of these. Hopefully, it'll just be one more full one, where each department head will come back and give you a report on, on their budget and how that looks. And then after that, any special item or discussion, we'll try to draft it into the regular budget. I'm not budget, I'm sorry, agenda item, agenda. So we'll do that. So we'll do that. Hopefully, presentation by, for the budget in September, and approval of the budget by October 1. Thank you. And thank you, Council, for your patience and participation today. And thanks, staff, for their hard work.
City Attorney, anything?
I'll remember that.
All right. I just want to thank the staff as well, the city manager, for all the information today, and meeting adjourned.
Start back at three.